IPOB
One Family
IPOB
One Family
IPOB One Family I thank all of you for being here today. And if the enthusiasm, the punctuality, if the camaraderie and the brotherhood and the togetherness I have seen in Houston can be represented across America, I assure you that Biafra will come. We have come to preach the gospel of heaven. Who's your marchina? And here in Houston, I must preach it. Our veterans are here. And it's a very good thing that you have downed to music. It's very good. Because I don't have good news for you. You know, it's one of those scenarios where somebody will ask you a question and say, "I have news for you. One is bad and one is good. Which one do you want first?" I think we have dispensed with the good news. We have made merry. Now, we are going to give you the truth. And nothing but the truth. Some of us are here in America having fun. You live in very beautiful houses, I must acknowledge. Some of you have two or three cars. You have jobs to go to. You have food to eat. There is 24 hours electricity. There is water. There is also healthcare for some of you who are working. But where we come from, there is nothing. The reason why there is nothing is because those who are not worthy to be empowered are those who are empowered. I told you. I told you. I told you repeatedly for the past six years, for those who can listen, that a day will come. The Fulanese will march presently into our land to demand what doesn't belong to them. A day will come when you will beg to serve the zoo. A day will come when you will have nothing. Nobody will regard you as anything. A day will come when your life will be useless. A day will come when you wish. You have never heard of the name Nigeria before. That day is now. It has come. We are the oldest people in the world. Their friends are the oldest people on the face of this very planet by none. Anawani ndibo. Ndibo. The beginning. Because in Igbo lexicon, every name has a meaning. Every name has a meaning. The meaning of Igbo for those who do not know is ancient. Those that started the process. Ndembu. The very first people. But it's not a very strange as the scripture makes us aware, today the first is now the last. Are we not the last? But unlike some people, I have shown that is why I do what I do. That is why we do what we do. Because we have honor and dignity. Somebody came to America and built it. America did not fall from heaven. Men built it with their hands. The funniest thing is that they needed Biafran labor to be able to complete the assignment. Because without Biafran, there will be no America. Without Biafran, the greatest of America will be diminished. Without Biafra, this country would have been nothing. We gave them free service for 200 years. Most of the African-Americans, you see, you call them Akata. Some of them are your relatives. Some of them are from your family. If you have a child and that child is suffering from a disease you can't understand, it is because you married your own bloodline, which doesn't happen in our culture. Are you aware of that? You cannot even marry from your mother's village. You cannot marry from your grandmother's village. Are you aware of that? We came here, we lost our way. We became very selfish. We reversed everything that is good about us. We stopped caring. Those of you in America, you stopped caring. The founders of World Igbo Congress is here, some of them. What I say behind somebody's back is what I say in front of them. Had World Igbo Congress done what they were supposed to do, I wouldn't be here today. I wouldn't be here today. But I do hope under the leadership of Professor Jofok that things will change. That they will live up to the expectation and rise up to this very challenge from our Ushafulani. Because two days ago, they came for our land. They were no longer content with killing us and raping our mothers in our Kwai Bon, in Enugu State and in Eboni. They are no longer content with beheading our fathers when we go to the farms. They are no longer content with raping our daughters as well and abducting them in the process. They have now come to take our land from us. And some of us are in America eating hamburger. Our race is about to become extinct. As I speak to you today, they have come inside Enugu, as they did in 1967. Because over the years, you refused to speak with one voice. You thought that fighting for leadership is the end-all and be-all of your relevance wherever you are. Every association you had was divided into four, five, six, seven, eight. Our men decided to embrace gossip more than anything else. Whilst our mothers were struggling and fighting, our men were busy plotting how to divide every association that ever came up. They became merchants of gossip and wordlessness. And that is why we are in this mess. Because had we been together like a people, Fulanese will not have the temerity to come to our land in front of our governors to demand that we give our land to them. I told you so. I told you so in Igbo language. And I said, "When the time comes." Because that is how we say it in my village. We are no longer as intelligent as we used to be. We used to be a very intelligent race. The most gifted, the most talented, the most honorable, the most truthful, the most accomplished race in Africa. Today, we have been reduced to nothing. That ordinary Igbo meeting of our Hanesa cannot be convened. Simple Igbo meeting. We have been reduced to issuing pre-statements on the pages of European newspapers. But you had a television though before. I'm sure you know that. Do you know the name? It's called Minaj. You know, before Chinese came, before AIT came. But it died because it was owned by an Igbo man. All the Igbo men refused to invest in that very business. Because of our wickedness and backwardness. The Igbo people that emerged after 1970 is counterfeit, myself included. They no longer see what is coming ahead. They no longer have hope anymore. We became scavengers. And that is the reason why our land is gone. That is why Fulanese people can decide who becomes your governor. They tell you, no matter what you like, you can do. We determine who governs. And they do as we tell them. How do you explain or pontify a governor in office? Fulanese hismen are in our land killing us. Ina number, ina nam. Obi, I know no one said anything. The funniest thing is that some of us don't realize the mess we are in. We don't know it. And I can assure you that impunity upon impunity is happening in our villages today. The reason why you don't hear about it is because the Europeans are in charge of the media. They won't publish it. Our enemies are plentiful. As I said earlier today, I will paraphrase it today. There is the zoo called Nigeria. By the way, anybody who says he's a Nigerian is an animal, I'm sure you know that. How many of you here are Nigerians? How many of you here are from the zoo? Some of us are not ashamed to answer the name that was concocted. Nigeria means the lowest of the low. The land of Nigas. Those who are abandoned. That is the meaning of Niga area, Nigeria, that you answer. You are not ashamed of yourself and you say you're Nigerian. Can anybody tell me the meaning of the word Nigeria that you're so proud of? The woman that gave you the name saw you as a baboon. Some of you wonder why Africa is always poor. Every year, poor. And the poverty in Africa is making it impossible for white people to respect black people in America. The reason why Europeans are respected is because Europe is doing well. You respect Japanese in America because Japan is doing very well. Is that not true? And some of them come here visa-free on a visa waiver program. That is how you know you've arrived. The only country with that privilege in Africa is South Africa. And surprise, surprise, it was wrong by white people for so many years. I don't know if we are thinking at all. Now, the question is this. What is your purpose on this very earth? Is it to be a slave and a servant after that your children take over from you and after that their children in perpetuity? As you think you're giving birth to your children that maybe go to Harvard or Yale, you're giving birth to future generation of slaves in America. The reason being that Africa is so horribly bad that nothing good comes out of it. The white man came from Europe. Came into our land and said, "You, you, 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 from today, your name is Nigeria." And nobody asked questions. Ask yourself this very question then. Do you think that as an African, you can go into Europe and say to maybe Hungary and Belgium and say, "You, you, 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 from today, your name is Europa"? Can you do that? That means you're not equal to a white man. It means you are inferior. Because there are things he can do to you that you cannot do to him. That makes you inferior. There is only one solution. That solution is Biafra. I said, "The solution is Biafra." The solution of black people is Biafra. The solution to problems in Africa is Biafra. As early as here, most in the end. That's my job. I tell you something and you ignore it. Give it maybe one more lemon. You will see it. Everything I told you came to pass. Only one is remaining. And that is Biafra. And I assure you that Biafra will come. You are the finest of the finest. I am very, very proud of who I am. I consider myself very lucky to have been born a Biafran. And that is why I'm very, very proud of Biafra. That is why I would die a Biafran. And that is why this Biafran flag will rise up. And that is why we got our independence and we'll be free. The same thing they did to Azikiwe they are today doing to all of us. Zeke was begging them to go to school, they said, "No." The same Ebelle, Azikiwe. That's the name of Jonathan, isn't it? There is a saying, "Where we come from." Good luck, Jonathan went to Asorok as his namesake did. His concern was Fulanese education and Alamoji. And he reminds me of Obama. Because I know some of you here foolishly vote for Democratic Party. I say foolishly. Who ended slavery in America? Which party? Which party? Which party is the party of slave owners in America? Which party? Am I allowed to, am I dabbling in their politics here? Are you sure that Mula will not open up a probe against Biafra? For meddling in a nation in America? I said to people that when you elect a Democrat as a president, the only thing they can do for you is to increase the amount they pay you of food stamp. But the Republican Party believes in what is called tough love. You may not like it. But over time, it will help you. I prefer that person that tells me the truth to my face than the one that'll be pretending. Supporting Alamoji in the North. Obama destroyed Libya. It was Obama that chased away Jonathan and Putin Bukhari before Biafra. I think it was President Johnson that introduced the new deal in America, is that correct? A landmark social welfare program. What are you going to remember Obama by? And he was there for eight years. And some people are grumbling. And I asked them and I said, "That thing that Obama as a black man could not do for you for eight years, how do you want a white man Trump to do it for you in three years?" Am I making any sense here? I wish they can deport all of us. Only then will our senses come back. Some of you here are engineers, architects, doctors, medical practitioners, pharmacists, isn't it? Don't you think it would be better if you're a pharmacist in your village? I like the way that Americans protect their country and how proud they are of it. Some people left from the seaport of Southampton in England aboard a ship called Mary Rose. They came here to found a new civilization under God. They succeeded in doing that and that today makes America the longest surviving hegemonic civilization since the history of humanity began. A few people. That boat could have sank in the Atlantic. They knew the dangers that we are facing. But the hope that America held and the vision of a new nation was so compelling that every immediate danger faded into significance. The sights were set on the goal. I don't know what your goals are for our people back home. Because we are dying. And those you put at home to take care of your states, they are our Ushafulani slaves. They are also killing you. Some of you here, when I formed BSS, I'm sure some of you here grumbled and said, "Oh, they're balance, okay, we have a good boy." Is that not true? But I said that the reason why I formed BSS was to counter the coming of the Fulanese because I know they are coming. I see things that they cannot see. I knew that the Fulanese will come. I was preparing three years ahead. Some of you conspired. I'm a sida, I'm a coba midnight here, at 6 o'clock back home. I was gosier. You know, any morning gossip is very potent. I told you the last story, told you the last story, told you the last story. That Igbo men, governors, or Hanesa on their own decided to invite Fulanese army to come and kill me, my family, and IPOB. And now that they have come into our land, the same people are saying that we are ready. And somebody asked them, "You're ready to defend our land against Fulanese? Where are your children?" The same IPOB that was set up to defend our land that they betrayed are the ones they are relying upon to defend our land today. The reason why they are relying on IPOB is because they know we can do it. We have done it before. We continue to do it today. We shall continue to do it until Biafra comes. What I find very shocking is that people don't ask what are we going to do to stop these people? When I seek for advice, what they tell me is to embrace prayer. To try the diplomatic process. Get on your phone and make diplomacy. Oh, your fine, I turn on my diplomacy. And it's in your village. What other diplomacy can this demon understand if not an AK-47 for an AK-47? I hope you're recording this proceedings. If those of you here today in this hall in Houston, where I believe WIC started. When they started WIC here, God was trying to send a message to them, but I'm not sure they saw it. WIC was set up here for this very day, for now. But I'm not sure that they quite understood the message. What Fulanis did is to say, we went to kill Nambikano. We killed IPOB family members. And now Nambikano is abroad. We can march into Biafra, nobody can stop us. You don't know that? When I came out of prison and was back home, did you hear about Fulani hate men? We drove them away. And because of the carrot of Igbo presidency in the year 2096. If you have been following the news, you will hear it. Those that own the zoo called Nigeria, Niyeti Ala, they said it today. You know that meeting in Enugu? They sent their secretary, not the big ogga. The big ogga was waiting. The funniest thing is that the secretary went to Enugu and told De Fuma, and we are prepared to offer you the presidency, but in return, give us your land. De Fuma, he said, I'll consider it. You know what they did that? An Igbo man can never, ever be the president of the zoo. And to add to that, neither will Tinubu. You don't know the game they are playing with Britain. They have gotten everybody where they want them. Now, believe you me, if they Fulanin, so please is they can decide to rule the zoo forever and ever. There is nothing anybody can do about it. I said there is nothing we can do about it. You go to tribunal in the court to say, oh, my man that was stolen from me. And the lawyer you're running to, Nigerian Bar Association, is running from the government. Government wants to kill them. Are you following? You are coming from this door. Maybe FBI is pursuing you from here. And you're running maybe to our, where's the secretary? Secretary man is here. And is here defending you. But before you could get to the middle here, you, secretary man, what's your son? He is pursuing you. Are you following? You said there is injustice in the land. I want to go to the courts to find or seek, to seek the rest. Before you go to the court, the judges we are on the, judges in Agos. The same thing pursuing you is pursuing the judges. When the same thing is pursuing you and pursuing the chief judge, that led the Nigerian Bar Association to proclaim that Nigeria is a lawless society. And somebody will wake up tomorrow morning and say, I am a Nigerian. Sometimes, I'm not trying to excuse racial abuse or attack. But I'm being very honest. If I read through the papers every day, you come from this hopeless British creation called Nigeria, where nothing works. People are fleeing, trekking through Sahara Desert and dying in the process. Drowning in the Mediterranean. Humiliated. Sold into slavery in Peapoli. Abused as house slaves in Saudi Arabia. And you still wake up and say, I am a proud Nigerian. Oh, no, I won't feel sorry for you. Because you are foolish. Beyond foolishness. I belong to that very group of Biafrans that came here as slaves somewhere in a place called Savannah in Georgia. And they said to the white man, instead of me to serve you as a slave, I will die.
They sank themselves.
If we know what has befallen us as a people, as a race, there will be urgency on the part of everybody to make sure that Biafra is restored. Because I tell you today, the most educated people outside white Americans are Biafrans in America. The most successful in terms of their own business startups and enterprise are Biafrans here in America. We are all these things for a reason. Not so that you can become very selfish and cocoon yourself in your detached homes and well-manicured lawns and gardens. Chukwueka Biamma gave you that grace. That you may be able to use it to better not just yourself, but from the environment where you come from. And failure to do it, you know what the Bible, failure to do it. Failure to do it. Ochul onama. And let me warn you, all of you here gathered, that's why I asked if this is being recorded. If you don't rise up from this very day, from this moment to support IPOB, to confront the mess that our land has become in the hands of Fulani, John J. Wade, Jihadis, God will not forgive you. Even the land of America will not forgive you. I know some of you may think I'm having fun. There are some people that think that they are leadership material. They want to lead. They join meetings because they are craving leadership. Not that they have anything to offer. If you want to lead, you come and lead and we'll follow you. But IPOB has a mind of his own. If I stop living up to expectation, this IPOB that I set up will reject me. Do you know that? And IPOB does not belong to me. Biafra does not belong to me. It doesn't belong to my family. It belongs to all of us. The reason why some of you loosely have met that they call him Supreme Leader. It's because some of your priorities are misplaced. The Supreme Leader they call me is a kind name. It's not an official title. Makadiyamama is not an official title. Are you hearing me? It is not official title. It's a nickname. It's like, I am here to serve you, not to be supreme over anybody. Anybody that knows me will testify that I'm a very humble person. All the anger that I have inside me is against the enemies of Biafra. You know, so the Gafra will hate you. If you're against Biafra, it will destroy you. That's why I'm. Looking in my direction and said, my lord and my savior. That also is a kind name. They say it because, listen. When they go online and see sponsored attacks against IPOB and myself, they develop this as a defense mechanism and as a weapon of attack against that very person. That's why they do it. Not that anybody is coming to replace Yeshua. When I pray every day, I pray seven times a day and I said to Chukwueka Biamma, I am only but flesh. One day I will die, but your word will live forever. And your word says that Biafra will come. And it might turn that Biafra will come. And that is my hope. I am explaining this here out of respect for Houston. I am not a supreme leader. I am a supreme servant. Are you listening to me? They say it because they want to spite those. The reason why we do what we do is not so that we can fly all over the world and address our people or that we can put our lives in danger in search of a greater glory. We do what we do because we have been mandated divinely to ensure that Biafra comes in our time. And if Biafra doesn't come, then there is no God in heaven. That's what I pray. That's what I pray. Because your world is here and amen. Everything you say must come to pass. Though heaven and earth may pass away, but your word shall remain. Your word says that Biafra will come. Then therefore Biafra must come. If Biafra doesn't come, you will all be destroyed. I said, if you don't fight for Biafra to come, believe you me, out of anger, Chukwueka Biamma will obliterate our race. Some of you want to lead, now is the time. You don't need permission from me, not from our national coordinator, not even from Bonachi. Go and organize IPOB wherever you are. Do you know why it has to be IPOB? Because we never retreat nor surrender. IPOB will keep going until Biafra comes. Nobody can buy us. Nobody can intimidate us. Nobody can stop us from doing what we are doing. And by the way, we are joining people that the Fulanis are afraid of. Only IPOB can defend our land. And only you can support IPOB. If you don't support IPOB, my own passport color is red. Just understand that if you don't fight for your land, you forfeit the right to get angry anytime you are insulted. Do they insult Japanese people here? Do they insult Japanese people here? Under the Malaysia of yesterday, do they insult Malaysians here? China, come on. Do they insult Chinese? Do you know why? All these places have developed and civilized. But sadly, Africa is not developed. It doesn't matter your title in Houston. It doesn't matter where you work, how many PhDs you've accumulated, how many white friends you have. Or maybe how many mixed-race children you have. You can never be white. You can never be. Until you do those things that white people do, nobody can respect you. We will remain beggars for life. Some of us here are not ashamed that your own children will use their two legs to walk through the desert. To go to Europe or to be auctioned off as slaves in North Africa. You are not ashamed of yourself. You know, I already said, I'm a big man, have arrived, I have got twenty degree, I'm an engineer, rubbish. You are nothing. But a glorified house, that thing. You decide what you choose to do from this day onwards. It is up to you. And I've taken a bath in Houston, more or less having fun and praising Elohim for IPOB. But our land is under occupation. The phase of diplomacy has gone through the window. How do we drive them out is the question. And the only people that can do this is IPOB. Why do you ask? Why do you ask? Before man and before God in heaven. So your petty envy and jealousy can't get you anywhere. And you want to rescue all of them. And you want a white man to respect you. Why do you have to go and respect yourselves? Where in another man's land? Yes, we built it, but by force, not voluntary. And that is why Biafra will come. All this is synchronized. As I was coming here, my wife was coming in. As I was coming here, my wife was coming in.
I'm so happy to see you all today. A lot of people, I know, are new, so I do speak. So I'm so happy and I hope that at some point I'll be able to say something. I'm happy to see everyone of us here and I thank God for good health and prosperity. We seem to eat a lot in America and you can see the evidence. So at some point I'll be able to say something. Thank you.
That's my wife, Makalia, my Maganduata. Somebody saw my picture with Monachi. You know Monachi is a troublemaker. I'm a basic pandemic. Except for that. All the same, what I want all of you to understand is this. That you are better off working with IPOB to restore Biafra. Because if you like, you join us. If you like, you don't. One thing is certain. Biafra will come. And when Biafra comes, you will not come to Biafra land. If you don't support IPOB, if you like, take an airplane to Rwanda and get temporary citizenship from Rwanda to come into Biafra land. We will not allow your plane to land. Because we are not foolish. You see, sometimes when people get angry in the Western world and they become racist towards black people, we don't actually capture the whole picture. All of us here, we have mobile phones, yes? Did mobile phone fall from heaven? Do you know that your mobile phone works with a satellite orbiting this very earth? Do you know how many people died to put one satellite in orbit? It's called sacrifice. All you do is you come, you consume, you consume, you consume. You don't contribute. That is why sometimes they're upset. India has gone to space. So has China. Maybe even, I think Brazil has gone as well. There is no indigenous African country that's ever gone to space. I said, "None." And you want to participate, you want to partake in enjoying what comes out of this without understanding the sacrifice that goes with it. Some people are sitting down laughing at IPOB. We are dying. They are killing us. You can never ask yourself, "How can I help?" All that you're concerned about is, what a career. He's a small boy. Yes? He didn't find the world. At what age did Obama go to become their president here? Forty? Forty-eight? Oh, forty-six? Lesser in his forties, yes? But he's a small boy. According to our culture, he's a small boy. That is how selfish some of our elders, as they say, all of our elders, some of them are. Because when the Westman left, most of them were in their early twenties. Late twenties, early thirties. They were given the responsibility to pilot the affairs of the nation. But in our time, in our hometown, they say we are small. And I said to them, "For the past fifty years, with all due respect in the world, what have you achieved for us?" I'm not trying to insult anybody because if you've achieved something, Fulani cannot come to our land and say they want to take it. It is an indictment of the same type of association politics we have been playing for fifty-two days. If I ask some people here, they will say we have our own group. Our group is called this. This gathering, that association. But all of us put together in other associations, we are worth nothing. Because if we are worth something, there is no way Fulani can come to Enugu and say to us, "We want your land." Are you following? You know, we don't take criticisms very well. May I take it that some people can't? What do we expect you to do? Is there any reason why all of you here gathered today will not come to Washington next year for a march? To let the world know what is happening to us? Any reason? Any reason? We will march next year on the third of July. Why are we going to march on the third of July? Because when you are in the country of a white man, for you to get anything, you must demonstrate on the street. If you don't, nobody will listen to you. That is a fact of life. Before women got the vote in America, the suffragette movement, they went to Washington, they demonstrated. Before Martin Luther King, "May God rest his soul." "May God rest his soul." "May God rest his soul." Before he sacrificed his life for all of you. He marched in Washington. That you may have all those fancy jobs you have today. Without him, you wouldn't have had all the jobs you have now. None of you. It's called sacrifice. As the whole Sun American say, "Work in a good way, man, you know." You must follow people, what they have done before. You can't sit in your house and write Trump about Biafra and Trump will respond. It's impossible. What cloud do you command? If we go to Washington next year, when they look through their windows on Capitol Hill and they see one million Biafras marching, you don't need to write to them, they will write to you. That is the paradox of the skyscraper. Do you know it? You know, after colonialism, at independence, most of the so-called nationalist leaders, in the case of the zoo, I call them the three blind mice. They said they studied abroad. They saw Chrysler Tower, you know those fancy tall buildings? They went to Marina Lagos and built their own. You know those tall buildings? Then grandmother, they lift the rock. But then the skyscraper, because there's skyscraper in New York, so we have to build one here as well. And after four years, no running water anymore. You live on the 58th floor. And carry it up the stairs because of course lift is not working anymore. But you live in a skyscraper in Africa. Do you know why I call it the paradox of the skyscraper? Because when we come to this part of the world, all we see is the fancy stuff. Do you know that? The glittering fancy stuff, that's what we see. We never ask ourselves the discipline that would obtain that very productive process. Discipline. Biafra cannot be free until you fight for it. You must fight for it. Anybody telling you that I'm not here until I get independence is a bloody lie. You must tell the world you exist. You must tell your petitions here in America not to take the vote of Biafrans for granted. You must show them how many you are. You must let them know that you are here. That you hold the key to determine who goes into the White House in 2020. You can determine it. And once they know you have that power, anything you want, they give it to you. That is how politics works. Not politics of the zoo. You carry money all over the place. Here is different. I expect you to be teaching me this. those of you who are Nigerians, those who decide to remain a part and parcel of the zoo, you have seen where it has gotten us today. Have you seen it? On a metal bed in the nobility that our land is under occupation. Do you know that Fulanitesmen have come? Do you know that? Do you know that? Some of you don't know. And anybody who doesn't know, may Trump deport them or their children back to the land. Our land is under occupation, if you don't know, let me tell you. The reason why you're a Nigerian is because of the oil and gas, if you don't know, let me also tell you. There's some oil and gas, you don't enjoy it. Those are convinced the Jaws and so-called South South to fight Igbo brothers and sisters. How far today? Are you enjoying that oil? Do you see how foolish we are? If this Igbo man wants me because of the oil, are you enjoying the oil? One billion dollars missing. One billion stolen by a Fulani man. Listen, I said one billion dollars. And idiots came out openly to tell the whole world that he doesn't know where the money is.
Who challenges them? No men in the line.
Olisa Mechu. Listen carefully. Do you know there's a difference between billion and million? Do you know? Billion starts with B, million starts with M. Is that correct? B, we begin the calculator, zero, no more space. If you like, you try it. Olisa Mechu was given, listen carefully, 400 million naira. Which highest is 1.4 million dollars. If it's a factor, I think it's 1 million dollars anyway. And he's been dragged through the court every blessed day. Every blessed day. Money they gave him for campaign, but a Fulani man sat down and swallowed one billion dollars. Now, do you see how meaningless all those associations?
Yes, useless.
Because if you're strong, such nonsense won't happen. Now, the reason why I keep pointing out the potency of our associations, proliferation. Everywhere you go, there's a new group. Everywhere you go, all amounts to zero. Only Migeti Ala, one organization, one, from Fulani, only one. And they have taken us over. I want to form my own, my own faction. Do you see how Fulani people succeeded in achieving their 200-year-old agenda of conquering everybody? For 200 years, they planned and executed this. And I told you in Los Angeles that they were hurrying. Before I flew from LA to Houston, they have come into our land asking us because they know that your petty envy and jealousy of IPOB will prevent you from supporting IPOB, capable of defending our land. So Fulani people are counting on your wickedness.
Yes, they are.
That's what they're relying upon. You people are the reason why Fulanis in our land. You are the reason. All those useless groups and associations and are formed everywhere came down to... If you don't rise up, our land will be gone. And if the men cannot do it and show that our mothers can. If our men cannot do it, our mothers will. They forced people to rise up against European rule in Africa. They forced people, the whole of Africa, Biafran women. And maybe the time has come for them again to take the lead last night. I don't remove myself when I say things. What I tell is for our own good, that we may change and become better Biafrans. Become better Igbo people, better Jaws, better Igbo, better Anan, better Idoma, better Igala. Can anybody tell me here the title of the traditional law of Igala? Do you believe that Igala people and Igbo people are related? Do you believe it? Have you heard of the title before, the Ata of Obosi? You have Ata in your village? His brother. They are from Igala. You know the man they call Iweka? You know Iweka, they named Opa Iweka after him? Do you know he's an Igala man? From Obosi? Is that correct? I may have been born and raised in the village. I'm from Abubon. Igala and Igbo are one. When we say that Igala is part of Biafra, we know what we are talking about. When we say that Idoma is part of Biafra, we know what we are talking about. When we say that J is part of Biafra, we know what we are saying. When we say that Isoko is Biafra, we know what we are talking about. When we say that Isoko is Biafra, we know what we are talking about. Is there anybody who is dressed like a proper Biafran woman here, two-piece robe, anybody here? Uppapa Bo?